Mr. Kylie will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could ask you remain standing for a moment of silence. Two members of our past members are town administrations. Sherri Stenick recently lost her brother, passed away at too early an age, and former town attorney Dick Saxel, his wife Jessie Ferris passed away, so we've got a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you. We're about to do the minutes. Mr. Kylie, you had asked for a moment of personal privilege. Did you want to take that?
Yeah, could I?
Go right ahead.
Oh, that would be fantastic. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a couple of neighbors of mine. Like across town, I'm sure there were hundreds of similar events during this past snowstorm, but one hit really close to home for me. The weekend that it snowed, the 35 inches, unfortunately for me, I was flat out in bed with the flu, couldn't even leave the house. My wife Erica and my young son Aiden were out there shoveling, but they were struggling. And the neighbors on Steiner Street where we live, the cul-de-sac, one by one, they finished their driveways and their sidewalks, and they noticed my wife and 12-year-old struggling, and one by one, they came over to help shovel our large driveway in our 36 inches of snow. And it was a wonderful thing to see because people quite often ask us, you know, what do we like about Fairfield? What makes us want to live here? And it's the neighborhood, things like that, people helping people in times of need, whether they're seniors or kids or a family that can't shovel their snow. And it was just heartwarming to see my three neighbors come over, so I just wanted to say thank you to them. It was my neighbors Patty Staccato, Glenda O'Connell, and John Walker, and all three that live on Steiner Street right next to us. And it was just a great thing to see, so it was indicative of how our town works together.
Wow. Kevin, thank you for sharing that, and I think that, you know, we saw a number of stories like that throughout the storm. I totally concur with Kevin in terms of that's really what makes our town one community and gives us a special feeling. And along those lines, I'd like to give a shout-out to the gentleman across the street who came across with a snow blower to help me finish shoveling a driveway I was doing on Saturday morning. So, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Moving on, next up is the minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second, all right? Any discussion? You okay with him?
Great.
All right. All right, then in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. Next up, we have item four, some resignations. Elizabeth O'Connell from the Human Services Commission and from the Water Pollution Control Authority, Sherri Stenick. We want to thank them both for their volunteer spirit. Those names should be familiar to many of us. They volunteered in a number of capacities in our town and have been very involved for a long time, so we want to thank them for their service. Also for information, the First Selectman's appointment to the Southwest Regional Mental Health Board, Cheryl Bloomenfeld, Cheryl here? Unaffiliated, 326 South Denton Road. Her term is March 13 to March of 16. The Southwest Regional Mental Health Board is a very important function, especially today and especially after recent events where mental health has gotten a much bigger spotlight and we've realized the impact it can have on our community if it's not treated and not properly. The Mental Health Board oversees a number of the nonprofits and agencies that work in this area in Fairfield County and are charged with helping improve the quality of care and diagnosis for that. All right, appointments. First up is the Affordable Housing Committee. You want to split that up by person or you want to take that together? Any preference?
Together is fine.
Together is fine.
Okay, I think we've got two out of three here. Just one of us stands. So, may I have a motion to approve the following appointments to the Affordable Housing Commission? Saul Bricks, Republican, 785 Churchill Road, term from November 11 to November 15 to replace Ann Jackson. Jill, I'm not going to get this right. Is Jill here?
Yeah.
Jill, how do I say your last name?
Ruzencheck.
Ruzencheck, thank you very much. Democrat, 6 Brooklawn Parkway, term November 11 to November 15 to replace Mary Galgada. And Deborah Owens, Republican, 166 Colonial Drive, term November 09 to November 13 to replace Mark Foreman. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Jill, you're here. Deb here?
Yep.
There you are, right in front of me, sorry. And Saul is not here.
He is.
Is he?
No.
No, he couldn't.
He couldn't make it.
I thought you said he couldn't make it.
That's right.
Saul Bricks has served in many capacities in our town as a volunteer from planning and zoning to the Town Facilities Commission and most recently as a member of the Ward-Rooft Building Committee. So he has been very active and we're thrilled that he would, at least I'm thrilled that he would continue to serve in this regard. Jill, have any comments on Saul? Any discussion?
Just a quick comment on the group itself. I've had the pleasure of working with Saul and Debbie in years past, and Jill has a very impressive resume. And once again, you know, thank you to great members of our community for stepping up to volunteer for these very important committees.
I concur. I actually have been overwhelmed, I understand through the First Selectman's office, that there's been a lot of interest and after the press release that was put out, and it's incredibly encouraging and heartwarming and affirms what Selectman Kylie said earlier about the nature of our community. And I am very impressed with the group of people coming on board and obviously later in today's agenda, affordable housing and updating our plan is a really significant issue right now, so we're really grateful that you're willing to step forward.
I will also echo the comments of my colleagues. Deb and I have had a chance to know each other over time in a couple capacities, both professionally with your magazine as well as in your volunteer service to the town, so thank you. And Jill, thank you for stepping up to volunteer. You're part of the fresh blood, the new blood, as we like to call it, coming in to kind of keep the energy alive and keep the new perspectives in. So thank you very much for making our community stronger by stepping up to volunteer. Any further comments from here? Any comments from the public? All right, thank you. Back to the board. Ready to vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you. Deborah, Jill, would either of you like to comment?
Yeah, thank you. If there's a lot to be done, I guess we're, give us a minute.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Fairfield Housing Authority. John Mattio, Republican, 163 Daybreak Road, November 12 to November 13 to replace Dot Anderson who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. John, are you here? Yeah, there you are. Sorry. All right, any comments from the board?
Well, I'll comment. I just met Mr. Mattio in person today, but his reputation precedes him, and again, we're very fortunate to have his experience and perspective and again, want to thank all those who have expressed interest in this and, well, there will always be opportunities to serve, so thank you, Mr. Mattio, for stepping forward.
Kevin?
Yes, again, thank you to Mr. Mattio for stepping up to serve. I've had the pleasure of working with John in years past on Board of Education issues and on other town bodies, and he's always been an exemplary public servant, so it's great to see you back. Thank you.
John, again, let me echo again the comments. We appreciate your volunteer spirit, especially given how much you've contributed to our community in the past. Thank you for stepping up again and taking on a new challenge here. Any more comments here?
No.
Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
John, thank you and congratulations. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the following Human Services Commission appointment, Bernard Lynch, unaffiliated, from 20 Middlebrook Place, term 1112 through 1116 to replace Lou Fournau, who, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lynch, are you here? Very good, thank you. Any comments from the board?
I met Mr. Lynch in working with him on the Fairfield Careers Alcohol and Health Task Force, which is about to morph into our local prevention council, but Mr. Lynch was a huge asset and help in terms of helping provide some statistical data and professional support, so I think he'll bring a wonderful perspective to the group, and I'm grateful he's willing to serve.
Thank you. Can I?
Just a thank you to Mr. Lynch. Appreciate that.
All right, and I guess I should mention, since Mr. Lynch, it sounds like you're about to be new on our Human Services Commission, we also have our new Director of Human Services, Terry Gignac, who is here. And I guess I should introduce Terry to the board, if you haven't had a chance to meet her yet.
And to the public, maybe we should.
Yes.
It's great to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Director of Human Services. Terry Gignac, we'll get you the spelling. Any further comments from the board?
Is it going to be a test to see if we can spell all this?
It's a hard one.
I'll try. No other comments.
All right. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, appointment to the Shellfish Commission, Mr. Richard Ferrari, Democrat, 153 Figler Avenue, November 09 to November 14. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't think Mr. Ferrari's here? No. All right. Any comments from the board?
Just, he has an impressive resume and certainly will be interested to meet another Navy sailor who certainly has experience, so it'll be great to have him on board. And I also just want to, while we're on Shellfish, just give a thanks to that commission for the work that they've done with the First Selectmen and our state delegation to help make sure that the Mill River is being protected, so kudos to them.
Thank you. Kevin, anything? All right. You know, and again, I think that this is, the Shellfish Commission normally isn't one where there's a lot of action, a lot of excitement going on at all times, but certainly right now with the work that's being done in Mill River, with the evaluation process. I was up in Hartford last week with the Shellfish Commission meeting with the deep department of Energy and Environmental Protection and their team up there to let them know that we're very concerned about what's taking place with Mill River. We definitely want it done and we want to have that brownfield back and being productive for the town and creating tax dollars for the town, but we don't want to do that at the expense of Mill River and want to make sure that every precaution is being taken to make sure that the Mill River cleanup is done right and done the first time. So Mr. Ferrari's going to have a little bit more excitement than perhaps he planned, but we thank him for his volunteer spirit there. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, the Water Pollution Control Authority. We have two appointments. Christian Dockham, Democrat, 633 Riverside Drive, term November 09 to November 13 to replace Sherri Stenick, who resigned, and Mark Ellison, unaffiliated, 732 Hillside Road, term November 11 through November 15 to replace Frank Chaplinsky, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any comments from the board? Christian?
This is another case of the amazing commitment of our community. For the past two WPCA meetings, which I sit on as the Selectman, we have had a number of community members who have come and attended the meetings, who have talked with members of the authority, who have expressed interest and learned more, and it's been amazing. We're fortunate and I'm grateful to all those who did that, and again, hope we can get some of those other folks involved, some of whom already are. But Mr. Dockham and Mr. Ellison are both tremendous candidates, and I know that Mr. Ellison is not here today because he is actually with a client who is one of the largest wastewater, private wastewater treatment operators in the country, so, and Mr. Dockham is a science teacher, so they both bring unique perspectives and experience to the authority, and I look forward to working with them, assuming that they'll be approved today.
I just wanted to thank Christian and Mark for stepping up to volunteer for this very important commission, and they both have very impressive resumes, and I'm sure they'll do a great job for our towns. Thank you.
Is Mr. Dockham here? Oh, very good, very good. And Mr. Ellison, I think, couldn't make it, correct? Again, I want to thank you very much. The volunteer spirit is obvious as we go through these committees, it's such an important part of our town, and we couldn't accomplish as much as we do and keep the spirit of Fairfield alive without your help and everybody's personal commitment, so I want to thank you very much for stepping up, and I believe this is one of the first times you're involved in one of our formal committees here. So it's, again, great to see a new face and some new blood, as we say, coming in to help out our town. With that, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. And thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Osborne Hill Windows Building Committee. To hear, consider and act upon the establishment of the Osborne Hill Windows Building Committee to review, modify, and approve the Windows Building Committee charge originally approved by the Board of Selectmen on April 24, 2002. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Now, this, the charge has come before us before. The thought was to bring it back before so we could review it, given it came before us in the spring, long before we knew what PCB stood for.
Right.
Now that we do, it seemed appropriate to address that before moving forward. So any thoughts on, is the charge good to go or should we be making any changes to it?
Just a vote in the header for the item, it's the Osborne Hill Windows Building Committee. I think the Osborne Hill Building Committee is probably a more appropriate moniker, given that there are a few other items being...
Did you tell them?
Yes, and I said that the header in the agenda has Osborne Hill Windows Building Committee, and that on the charge itself, it says the Osborne Hill Building Committee, which is a more probably appropriate name for the charge and for the committee, given that other items will be included in this.
The, so are you suggesting that the windows remain in the title or come out of the title?
No, it looks, I think that the charge, I guess as we approved it, it said Osborne Hill Building Committee, and I'm just noting that that is more accurate as opposed to the title.
I see.
It seems that somewhere in here, we ought to talk about mitigation of PCBs.
Yeah.
Yes.
And maybe establish the plan, coordinate and supervise necessary upgrading and renovation of the windows, along with mitigation of PCB contamination. That sounds okay? I'll make a motion to that.
Yeah, you're adding it.
Oh, up there, okay. I thought you were putting a bullet. Okay, that's fine. And I think that, does it make sense to reference that anywhere else?
Do you want to put a bullet that ties back to it? Think you need to or no? Maybe not.
No.
They're kind of general bullets.
Right.
Yeah, I think those, the bullets are more administrative.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is not a style question so much as a substance question. At one point, when we talked about the Osborne Hill Windows, we talked about the Fairfield Ludlow Windows and the possibility of coming together and doing those. I know that the Board of Ed recently passed ed specs that are certainly much broader than just the windows, but was there ever any conversation between the administration with the central office administration about that concept or possibility, or because of the PCBs, we have had to go in a different direction and because of some of the other needs at Ludlow, we're just, you know, keeping those separated.
And now the other needs at Osborne Hill, too. I think we definitely talked about it.
Right.
The conversations didn't get very far, basically, because the synergy between two different window projects, while sounding okay, just didn't seem to mesh up well, provide any great economy of scale.
Mm-hmm.
And when we looked at doing additional projects at Ludlow, which was part of, it seemed to make sense from a building committee standpoint, they'd bring people in and do the windows and other Ludlow work and bring building committee members from the Ludlow community involved in that. Same thing on the Osborne Hill side. We're looking at that initially as just windows, and it seemed to make sense to get some folks... Initially, this came through as a non-recurring item. It looked to be little more than a window replacement. We might have tried to do that with a much smaller group, but we did need to get the reimbursement going from the state standpoint, so we needed to have a building committee in place for that. And now that it's expanded to a much larger project, it seems to make sense to get folks from the Osborne Hill community that are aware of this to do just this. So yes, we talked about it, but the synergy wasn't there as much as it's windows and windows. Both projects have kind of evolved beyond it.
Which makes sense to me. I just bring it up because it had been a point of conversation, and thank you for following up about that.
All right. While it's here, let me make a motion to add the wording, "along with mitigation of PCB contamination," to the first sentence on this charge, coming right after renovation of windows. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? Amendment only?
Sorry, I lost. Where are you adding? So after renovation of windows at this elementary school, you want to add what?
No, after the word "windows," along with PCB contamination.
So renovation, the first paragraph, renovation of windows.
After the word "windows."
Okay.
The following words.
Okay.
Along with mitigation of PCB contamination.
Okay.
At this elementary school. Does that sound okay? Sound good okay? All right.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public on that change? In the amendment only? All right, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So the charge stands before us as amended?
Mm-hmm.
Any further comments on the charge?
Just a process question, and I know this was initially approved about a year ago, before my time on the board and kind of before the current PCB problems were so pronounced. Do we need to run this by the Board of Ed for their input as to, or does it make any sense to get input from the Board of Ed because they've gone through this experience with PCBs, or does that not make any sense at all?
I think we've kind of done that.
Yeah.
From two standpoints. One, the charge was reviewed and discussed extensively, you know, with Board of Ed and Central Office at that time.
It was, okay.
What we're doing now is just going back because, in essence, the project's already started.
Right.
Cleanup's already started.
Mm-hmm.
This is basically, we're adding the building committee so that we qualify for reimbursement.
Right.
So that we maximize any return we can get from the state on that and minimize the cost to taxpayers in our town.
Mm-hmm.
And we're just adding this in to clarify that this project is not just about the windows replacement, but it's about the other activities involved with the PCB contamination, which would then extend to the gym, the flooring, anything else that gets involved in that. The project itself was approved in January.
Right.
In much more detail, so this is going back and kind of dotting i's and crossing t's to get everything aligned.
So basically, I think you just said the words I was looking to hear, that this is kind of syncing everything up and it's in conjunction with what we've done and voted on and with what the school administrators believe needs to be done.
Okay, I think so. And Mr. Collins, since we're referencing Central Office, did you want to add anything at this point to that?
No.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, any further comments on the charge? And again, what we're doing is, in essence, reapproving this with a modification, so we'll vote on it as amended, but we're, again, we're just making the change to make it closer to what the real project is.
Got it.
So at this point, any further comments on the charge as amended?
No.
Any comments from the public on the charge as amended? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have an amended charge. And Cheryl, if you could just please note in there that First Selectman McCarthy's comments, that it was agreed that we'd keep the name of this as the Osborne Hill Building Committee, just because of the expanded scope of the mitigation beyond the windows project. All right, so that's done. Next up, the Osborne Hill Windows Building Committee appointments. Is it okay to take this as a group?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointments to the Osborne Hill Building Committee. Brett Bader, independent, 94 Sycamore Lane. Susan Cardona, unaffiliated, 227 Fern Street. William H. Dunn, Republican, 205 Tuckahoe Lane. Kimberly Marshall, Democrat, 180 Brookbend Lane. And Stephen D. White, unaffiliated, 98 Rosemar Avenue. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, first off, how many of the folks are here? Just Susan and Bill Dunn. Thank you. That's good. Kim Marshall couldn't make it? Any questions of our two that are here?
No, just thank you for volunteering on this very important committee.
And I would also echo thanks. It's, it looks like a great group of variety of experiences, which is always helpful on a building committee, and as this board and other boards that the two of you have served on, as well as the RTM, and you'll get to meet them, too, will say, we put a lot of faith and trust in you in terms of being our watchdogs and our stewards, so thank you very much to both of you.
Again, I think what we've tried to do here is create both a balanced committee and get some folks that haven't been as involved in town to get back involved and to share with our community, kind of share the load. Many hands make light work, and I think that applies very well to our town as much as anything else. I should point out that Kimberly Marshall is currently serving on, or currently has recently served on the Fairfield Woods Middle School Building Committee, so she brings that expertise to, and experience to our group, and I, too, want to thank you for volunteering to step up here. With that, any comments from the public on our appointments? Back to the board. Any further comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, from the Community Economic Development Director. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Selectmen at its meeting on February 6, 2013, tasked the Affordable Housing Committee to prepare an update to the town... Housing Committee to prepare an update to the town of Fairfield's Affordable Housing Plan. And whereas the Affordable Housing Committee intends to seek grant funding from the State Office of Policy and Management for such assistance as may be available to develop said update to the Affordable Housing Plan, now therefore it be it resolved that in accordance with a request from the Director of Community Economic Development, the first Selectman be and hereby is authorized to submit an application for assistance under the Housing for Economic Growth Program, as referenced in Section 8-13 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to execute any documents necessary to facilitate the town's participation in said program, and to administer any grant funds provided in connection herewith. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Barnhart, did you have any comments to share with us on this?
There's any questions.
Do you want to come to the mic and do that?
Sure.
Any questions?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart, for looking for grant money for us, for one.
Always keep an eye out.
That's a great thing, and we are grateful for that. I am just wondering how likely it is that we will receive any funding?
Fairly likely. The state has had a program in place for seven years now where they provide active assistance to communities in support of their planning efforts to create affordable housing. This seems to fall squarely within that, the project parameters, so we're very hopeful that we'll receive some funding, which, the sole purpose of which is to augment the resources that we already have in-house. So, hopefully, we'll get some money out of it.
Just, I noticed in terms of building on the in-house resources, that you would hope to have someone to facilitate data collection and do analysis, meaning facilitation. And how would you go about finding someone? I know I'm jumping the gun, because we haven't gotten any money, but you said it's likely, so.
Those are examples of things that we think we might use the funds for. Certainly, we can do some of that work in-house. We're cognizant of other demands on existing staff resources, and so we think it might be helpful to augment those with outside help. And we would go through a selection process, similar to what the Planning and Zoning Commission did, as it engaged a consultant to help with the planning study of the Commerce Drive area. So, some of those same groups might be appropriate for us to use as a resource, and this more limited example or case, again, we think that we have a better result if the volunteers and the people on the Affordable Housing Committee and staff kind of lead that effort, but we also recognize that we have some limitations, both in terms of our own capacity and demands on our time and resources, so we think it might be prudent to supplement those, as the case may be, with some outside help.
Great. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Mark, please. And you just mentioned your resources and the strain on them, and I notice that this needs to get approved by the RTM in March, and it's due by April 1st.
Yes.
So, from a timeline perspective, are you folks along far enough where you're comfortable in getting through both our process, the RTM process, and meeting that deadline?
Yes.
You are?
I am.
Okay.
It's not a terribly complicated application. It does require the endorsement of not only the Planning and Zoning Commission, which we did secure at the end of February, as well as the RTM acting as the legislative body of the town. So, there was some discussion about whether this board would suffice, but I didn't want to get ruled out on a technicality, so in my conversations with the staff up at OPM, I decided that better safe than sorry, so we'll go the before route.
But that's not slowing you down?
It won't slow us down. We've already started our data collection efforts, and the grant application is well along.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mark, thank you. Any comments from the public on this?
Should recognize Mr. Grathwell.
Steve, if you'd come up to the mic and introduce yourself for the -- I don't teach you to raise your hand. There is a price to pay for everything.
This way, everyone gets to hear you at home, too.
Hi, I'm Steve Grothwell, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, and I just wanted to say first, thank you. Affordable housing, of course, is very important to the town. The need is great, and the task before the committee this year is going to be very challenging. Thank you for appointments that you made today. Deb, and Saul, and Jill, I think are going to be great additions to the committee, and thank you for considering this grant application, because we're going to need the extra resources, and that's it.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution from the Director of Public Works. Resolve that the funds be transferred from an increase in grant revenue in the amount of $10,946.67 to cover the cost of the upgrade of the Marina Sewerage Disposal Facility at South Benson Marina. And further resolve that the first Selectman is authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments thereof with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
All right.
Move this along a bit faster.
Mr. Bartlet, did you have a few words on this? I'm very interested in the 67 cents in terms of.
Yeah, right.
I can answer any question, but basically, the Marina currently has a pump-out station. It's used for boaters. It is in need of replacement. There's a Clean Vessel Act through the Clean Water Act at Long Island Sound, which gives us about $14,600 to do the overall project. That number is 75% of that cost. We'll kick in the 25% in in-house labor and some contractual services, and that will be the whole thing.
Okay, so it's basically a 75-25 split on that, and we can do that with kind of in-kind services, so it's not an outlay of cash, or basically, if there is, it's within the budget that DPW currently has?
That is correct. And in order to be eligible, it is a 25-75% split.
What's the timing of this kind of grant in the project?
If things go well, we'd like to have it in place by May for the upcoming boat season. The permit and everything's in place, it's just all the board approvals. So, once they're done, then we'll try to execute it for May.
Okay, good. Any comments from the board?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You've got so far.
As a follow-on to Mr. Tetra's question about the in-kind services, are the in-kind services, in-house services from the Public Works Department, is that what you're referring to?
Correct. The only exception would be a small fee for electrical, and that's in the $500 range. That would be outsourced to an electrician that we have on bid with us.
Okay. Which leads me to my question. I mean, with all the additional work from all the storms, and everything else that Mother Nature's been throwing at us, and all the work that we have to do on the repair list, how are your resources holding out as far as having time to contribute toward projects like this, just like, just in the big picture?
Yeah, it's a fair point, but in most of our rebuilding of Sandy, most of that work's going to be contracted out, because the fact is that we get a better bang and better return for our dollar with a 75% reimbursement from a contractual fee from a contractor doing it, and only some of in-house labor is captured in doing that same project. So, basically, if it was a $100,000 project, I would get $75,000 back if I subbed the whole project out, where if I did it in-house, I may get equipment rates, but I may not get the labor associated with it. So, we feel that we're juggling that well and doing the ones that we do get a good return on in-house, but a lot of the bigger ones will be going out to privatization. And therefore, we can do work like this.
So, you feel that you have the bandwidth within your department to contribute toward this?
That is correct.
Okay. And you touched on something else, and I'm just not crystal clear on how that 75-25 split works. I understand how it would work if it was all dollars, but since part of it is in-kind services, do those in-kind services get calculated and captured, and do they count as if they were dollars as part of the whole pie?
That is correct.
Is that how that works?
That is absolutely correct.
So, even though we're not spending the money, we're getting credit for those efforts and the value of those as part of the equation?
That is correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Well, if you would indulge me, while Mr. Bartlet's here, I would just love to take a moment to say thank you to you and to the Department of Public Works, and all those whom you direct, encourage, and support.
Thank you.
And you've just, and you're about to head back out of the roads again.
We're playing hidden roles tonight.
For now, so thank you. I just, I have to say, even on my own street, Mr. Kylie referenced neighbors, which I witnessed as well, but I also witnessed many times where people from the department just went out of their way and went above and beyond, so I just want to thank you. And thank you, because you do a phenomenal job orchestrating. You are the grand conductor.
Well, thank you. I'm supported by a very good team, so I can't take all the credit, but I thank you for the kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, especially during a stormy night, comments came back time and again, on what a great job you and your team did, so thank you on behalf of everybody.
Good to hear it. Hopefully, this won't be so bad.
Hope so, all right.
This will seem easy.
Yeah, I hope so.
All right. That's done, the comments from the board. Any comments from the public on this item? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlet, thank you again. Next up, item from the town attorney. To here, consider and act upon a lease amendment to the Sprint Cell Tower Congress Street Attorney Lesser, oh, may I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
All right.
Good afternoon to you all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This, I think that you have copies of the lease amendment. This amendment amends a lease that was originally signed in April of 1998, so it was 15 years ago, and all the provisions of that lease are the same, with the exception of the term, which is being changed. They're getting one, they're getting another 25 years, basically. Initial term of five years, with the option for four or five-year terms after that. The use of the word "term" is important here, because the way the lease is set up, there's a CPI increase every year in the rent, the Consumer Price Index, so the rent increases every year. But at the end of every five-year term, we get a kicker. We get an additional 10% of the last year's rent, so, which is a nice kicker. So, just so you'll know, the initial lease, when this lease was signed in 1928, the rent was $28,800 per year.
In 19 what?
98. What did I say?
Twenty-eight.
You were really ahead of our time.
I didn't think that.
That was a lot of money.
I'm not even sure they, I guess they had telephones, not cell phones.
First cell phone. So, Thomas Edison got this one?
Yeah. And the new rent is going to be $54,653. So, that's a pretty good jump in 15 years, it's about double. I think they're going to do some modifications, they're adding some equipment or changing equipment, which they do periodically, and otherwise, the original lease is the same, and hopefully, they'll continue to pass rent.
Any questions from the board?
Just a quick one. I remember back in 98, when the leases were first signed vaguely, and there were some discussions at that point in time between the various vendors. There was more than one vendor that went up there, right?
Yeah.
And about when they, when they could change equipment out, what types of equipment they could swap it out, you know, because technology was changing all the time, and no one knew what it was going to look like, or how it might affect the surrounding areas from a technology perspective, or from a safety perspective. So, do you have any further information on what type of equipment changes they might think about making, and is this particular area close enough where it would affect a neighbor or a business who might have concerns about that?
The answer to that is, I don't know, except that I do know that we do get requests periodically to change. I think as technology advances, they're probably adding capacity, maybe changing frequencies. The lease does provide that they're allowed to put any frequencies for which they get permits. So, they can't just put things up willy-nilly. They have to go to the government and do their studies and get permits. So, I would say that, although I don't think we have much control over that, they do have the right to do it, but they do have to get the proper permits to do it.
So, there's a framework for that process?
Yes.
And I just can't recall from many years ago what that was, or how it was controlled or monitored?
I would imagine that they probably have to go to the FCC, as well as the state, to get permission to do things like that.
Okay. But nothing glaring from your review of this?
No.
Along those lines?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lesser. My question is about the terms of the lease, and you had mentioned the significant jump in the rent payment, and how's that negotiated? Is that the best? I'm assuming, obviously, that this is the best deal that we can get, and is it similar to some of the other ones?
I haven't looked at the other ones. I do know that we've kind of continued along. Initially, it's called for a 10% jump, so we're getting the 10% jump at the end of the term. I've been told that there are, that we're not fully rented in this town. There are some, there's a couple of spots that people have removed equipment that we could rent, so we're not getting, there aren't a lot of inquiries coming in, you know, to put up other cell towers. So, that's basically, I think, the way that we're doing that. And CPI is a fairly standard thing, it's fair to everybody, and it's nice to get the extra 10%. And we have existing equipment, they've been there for a long time, you know, I think that's kind of been decided, we'll just keep on. This is, obviously, is not the only site in town, we have a number of them.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stanton, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to accept the, and approve the tax collector refunds?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. To here, consider and act upon any communications. I don't believe I have any. And then, to here, consider and act upon any other business, which will probably come before this board. Don't believe we have anything left there.
Yeah.
So, with that, may I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Charlotte, thank you for helping out.
Good to see you.